Good evening. We're here tonight for the 2025 start of our budget season. And would you please join us and salute the flag?
Roll call the members of the Ways and Means Subcommittee, Councillor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselfsky. Here, Councillor Zambudo is absent. And Chairman Silvestri.
Yeah.
Here, Quorum is present.
Hello and good evening. This is Richard Viskey, City CFO. And I'm going to give a brief presentation before the Department Budget Hearing. So I'll pass out some slide deck presentations for you. And Ashley, if you can put it on the screen, that'd be great. I apologize if some of you have heard this before, but I know we have some new members, so.
It was just up there.
Yeah, that's not like the full screen. It should, this should not go back, it should go to that side.
Do you see it right now?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I see.
Okay.
But then when I start the presentation, it's supposed to start and.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Thanks, Ash.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay. What you have before you is the 2025 Budget Submittal. We put the budget together within the guidelines of the GFPA, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the only national award program in the country for government budgeting. So we've submitted our budget to them every year since 2014. We've got the Distinguished Budget Award 11 years in a row. And we continue to submit the budget under the GFPA guidelines. Next slide, please. And basically, the GFPA budget is designed to assess a municipality's budget as a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communication device. So everything we put in that budget packet is something that the GFPA would like to see. We submit it every year. For our grading, we get the Distinguished Budget Award every year. We get some feedback on how we can make the budget better. So we continually try to improve the budget. And I'm happy to take any suggestions on things you may or may not want to see in the budget going forward. Some of them are required, but that's the format we use for the budget. Next slide, please. So basically, the budget's made up of revenues and expenses. Briefly, revenues are broken down by property taxes, local receipts, state aid, other financing sources, if any, and then enterprise fund revenue. Those revenues have to support the expenses that we have before you tonight for the services of the city. Those are broken down into general government, public safety, education, public works, human services, culture recreation, debt service, fixed costs, and enterprise funds. So that's kind of the layout of the budget when you're reading through. Next slide, please. So fiscal year 2025 budget has an estimated tax levy of $120,086,119. Basically, 46.5% of the city's revenues come in through property taxes. 74%, 76% of those are residential property taxes. 24 make up commercial, industrial, and personal property taxes. The natural two and a half growth gives us $2.8 million for fiscal year 2025. And our assessing department has estimated new growth at $3.5 million. And I just listed a couple of years of new growth forecast and fee our benefit. Next slide, please. Local receipts are estimated to come in at $22,025,000. That's about 4.1% increase from 2024. And just to give you an example of what local receipts are, those are general fund revenues that come in. The ones that you probably recognize the most would be motor vehicle excise, which is estimated at $7.1 million. Rooms excise, that's the hotel tax, $3.5 million. Mails excise tax, $1.25 million. Licensing permits, $3.25 million. Investment income, $2.5 million. We haven't contemplated any revenue increases with regard to any fee structures or anything else for this budget. We do plan to deliver a fee survey to the council over the summer for consideration for future years out. So this budget is balanced with no one-time revenues for general fund operating budget and very reasonable revenue estimates on local receipts. Next slide. Thank you. Our state aid, as of the last numbers from the state, our estimate would be $117,487,079. You may hear that referred to as cherry sheet revenue, which is how the state used to hand out the award letters on cherry colored paper. But it is state aid that comes in. Most of the state aid we get goes directly to the schools in the form of Chapter 70. Chapter 70 this year was $102.1 million. And like I said, that goes directly to the schools. And that's part of the funding formula that gets us to our net minimum school spending requirement number. Second biggest number is unrestricted general government aid, UGA. You might hear too it referred as. That is unrestricted local aid. Right now, there's only a 1% increase being contemplated on UGA for 2025. But this budget goes to committee, and we hope to see a little more money there. But right now, we're using the latest numbers as of the Senate budget. And next slide, please. All right, so we have two enterprise funds in the city. One's for water and sewer operations, one's for solid waste operations. The total revenue estimated that come in from water and sewer and solid waste enterprise funds are $35,081,502. For the water and sewer, $34.7 million is the revenue estimate that would include a $2 million contribution from the stabilization fund for water and sewer and $500,000 from ARPA funding. This council may recall, we did a three-year rate structure in 2023. This is the third year of that rate structure. Part of that rate structure was keeping the rates consistent at 4.25% increase and stabilizing those rates with our ARPA funding and our reserves. So that's how the enterprise funds built for water and sewer from the revenue side. So we're going to do a multi-year rate study also during fiscal year 2025 and going to research all types of options. I know there's some talk about tiered rate structures. I'd like to research monthly billing versus quarterly, I think would be helpful. But I think there's a multi-year rate study is necessary for us to ensure that we can keep our rates stable as we continue to improve our infrastructure and comply with the consent decree. So beyond, we'll go for that. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund only generates $340,000. So that's subsidized by the general fund to the $204.5 million revenues generated from bulky item fees, enforcement of the ordinance, and investment income are the primary revenue sources for the solid waste enterprise fund. Next slide, please. So that basically took us through the revenue side of the budget. Expense side, again, general government for fiscal year 2025, $10.7 million. I'll try to spare you from me reading every bullet point here, but try to highlight the things that have changed significantly with regard to general fund appropriations for fiscal year 25. Next slide. Public safety expense budget, $32.8 million. Includes our police fire, our 9/11 operations, building commissioner, municipal inspection, and parking department. We do have two new uniformed officers budgeted for both police and fire in fiscal year 2025. We are hoping that grant dollars will allow us to hire an additional five firefighters for fiscal year 2025. And that would help us staff the Point of Pines Fire Station that's due to be completed in the fall. We did absorb crossing guards into the parking department from the school department. So you'll see a big increase in the parking department budget. And that has to do with the 40 crossing guards that have moved over there for fiscal year 2025. Next slide, please. All right, education, $126,024,616 for Revere School District. That is the calculation that we come up with to meet net school spending minimum requirement. And that is the minimum contribution that the city can make to comply with DESI regulations. On the regional vocational school, it's 3.28 million, with operating budget being $2.2 million of that and the capital budget of $1,069,000. They're in the process of building a new high school. I'm sure most people are aware of that. This debt service is about half of what the total debt service will be upon completion. City of Revere is the largest member unit of the vocational school with about 20.5% of total students. Next slide. Department of Public Works total budget is $4.8 million for fiscal year 2025. That does not include the water and sewer and the solid waste, but rather the bullet points above administration, snow and ice highway signs, parks and open space, facilities of public property. There's been a lot of reorganization down at DPW due to some retirements and the new administration. You'll see that we have a new superintendent, two assistant superintendents, and operations manager. And a general foreman that has previously been a union position has now moved to the management side. So administration is just that. The administration and the other departments make up the labors of the department. Next slide, please. Health and Human Services budget in total, $2.4 million. That includes public health, elder affairs, veteran services, commission on disability. Consumer Affairs Department has been combined with the 311 constituent services. So you'll no longer see a budget for Consumer Affairs in fiscal year 25. And human rights is still a small budget, but the chairman was part of the DEI director's appointment. And DEI director falls in Human Resource Department. Community liaison positions that were funded through ARPA have been moved to the Health Department. We've half-funded those positions in fiscal year 2025 with the hope that we can assimilate them completely into the budget for 2026. And we also hired a new director at the Veterans Affairs. Next slide, please. Culture and Recreation, $2.1 million. Includes libraries, parks, and recreation, historical and cultural resources. The Department of Travel and Tourism has been combined into Parks and Recreation. So you'll no longer see a budget for that. You will see a budget for the House Health and Wellness Center. We are budgeting three full-time equivalents in, out of ARPA funds. And appropriation, as well as revenues collected, will fund the balance of that operating budget for fiscal year 2025. There is a new Department of Workforce Development and Labor Relations in the budget for fiscal year 2025, most of which is funded through grants. And that department makes up of two positions, a Director of Workforce Development and an Assistant Coordinator. Next slide, please. Debt service for the general fund side is $9.2 million. That includes some of the bigger projects that you're well aware of. As a DPW facility is funded at $25 million. Point of Pines Fire Station at $15.6 million. Purchase for Wonderland at $29.5 million. New high school will be the primary focus of debt service in the future. I think everybody knows that the council approved a $493 million bond for the high school, which the state will pick up $239 million of that, and the city will be responsible for up to $254 million. Debt service for the high school began to happen in 2026, and we've been over the schedule. But we will get more intimate with those debt schedules as this project progresses. Next slide, please. State assessments are just that. The state gives us money, they also assess us money. $18.5 million for fiscal year 2025. Some of the biggest numbers in that assessment is the MBTA at $4.4 million. School choice and charter school, which is money that is directed to those schools versus to the Revere Public School for those students that go into school choice and charter. That's $11.5 million. Retired teachers' health insurance is assessed at $2.3 million. These charges aren't appropriate by the council, but you'll see them in the appropriation order just so that you have the complete picture of revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2025. And these charges are just netted against our revenues that come in. So that's why there's no appropriation necessary per Department of Revenue regulations. Next slide, please. Other fixed costs, $46.1 million. Primary fixed costs are the health insurance at $26.3 million. Active plans for fiscal year 2025 have increased 6%. Retirees' health plans went up 9%. We're currently negotiating with the Public Employee Commission on a new agreement to try to get a long-term agreement for our healthcare going forward. We have property casualty insurance at $1.3 million. That is becoming more and more of a problem. Rising valuations are affecting the cost of that. But more importantly, the coastal community is really getting some challenges on wind damage and stuff like that. So we actively trying to get the best coverage and make sure that we are covered for everything. And cybersecurity is a close second. That's another hot topic that we're really going to make sure that we're covered because there's been some horror stories out there lately. Retirement assessment, $16.7 million. That's the unfunded liability. The city's at 70% funded. We are bound by a funding schedule that comes from PARAC, which is the overseeing agency of the retirement systems throughout the Commonwealth. And that is scheduled to be fully funded by 2034, which is important because our obligation for our pension, as far as from an appropriation standpoint, would drop significantly because we would just only have to pay the normal costs of the pension, not the old liabilities that have been on the books for a long time. Next slide, please. Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, $31.7 million and $4.8 million respectively. Some of the details are on the slide, but I won't read them all out. Next slide. Other financing uses, these are things that aren't budgeted but are required to be addressed per mass general law, one of which is overlay, which is the allowance for abatements and exemptions. We talked a little bit about that during the senior workoff. But the city gets full 100% credit for all property taxes levied. And if someone gets an abatement or an exemption, we don't reduce the receivable. We charge against this overlay account. That's a $1.5 million for fiscal year 2025. Cherry sheet offsets are cherry sheet monies that go directly to a particular purpose. And for us, we get money for the library, $137,000. That goes right to the library for their use without further appropriation. Snow and ice deficit is zero. Thank you, City Council, for voting to close that deficit last meeting. So there's no snow and ice deficit to raise for the 2025 budget. Next slide. Almost done. So there it is, this balanced budget. $294.6 million of revenues against $294.6 million expenses. This represents to the council that you have a balanced, responsible budget for fiscal year 2025. Again, no one-time revenues used for general fund operations. Very reasonable revenue estimates. And spending plan that we're proposing here on behalf of Mayor Keefe, we think is responsible with realistic revenue estimates. And I encourage you to vote the budget as submitted. Appreciate that. There's one more slide. It's really not part of the presentation, but it is part of the presentation because it's on here. But I just wanted to kind of bullet point some of the challenges ahead because we're talking about a snapshot of 2025. But we all know that we got a huge task with this high school and some of the things we'll be working on is trying to build that financial capacity to fund a new high school. So we know there's no appetite for debt exclusion in the city. So over the next months and fiscal years, we'll be exploring a lot of options to increase revenues, find new recurring revenues, or be efficient with expenses. And whether that's through, you know, health insurance, pension, debt service, we're going to be looking for every way we can try to create this capacity. We do have our collective bargaining agreements mostly all set to expire at the end of this fiscal year. So very important to have our responsible collective bargaining to make sure that we can stay solvent. And ARPA funds are set to expire at the end of calendar year 2024. They have to be committed, 2026 they have to be expended. We've done some great things with the ARPA funds. I'm prepared to bring a presentation to the council on that at some point in the future. But we have just about committed all of our funds. We are trying to wean off some of the positions that we funded with those dollars when we were hurting. Now we're in full recovery. So you'll see part of that as part of the budget. And I'll be here for every budget and answer any questions on each individual budget. So thank you for putting up with that presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'll just let you go right to the hearings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any councilors have any questions? No? Then we'll proceed.
First apartment tonight is going to be planning and community development.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
And appreciate the latitude in moving me up a little bit. We have a meeting of our bike and pedestrian master plan in just a few minutes. So I'll give just a quick overview of some of the accomplishments in the last fiscal year and what we're looking ahead to in the next year. And then happy to take any questions that you might have. But just some of the highlights. This year, we reestablished the role of a conservation agent serving to support the Conservation Commission in the city, which is something we're very proud of and I think is certainly an urgent need given the water resources we have throughout the city. On the zoning side, we've brought the city into compliance with MBTA communities as well as just at the last council meeting, FEMA's regulations to remain part of the floodplain. We've made some zoning changes relative to, should I, should we cite the page number? Are we scrolling through? We got it all? Okay. Relative to childcare and a series of other tweaks. You know, on the site plan side, we've reviewed over 100 projects, development projects going through the pipeline. We've received over $14 million in grants through our grant writing work, including supporting work happening outside of the Suffolk Downs offsite mitigation work, climate resiliency planning, the Broadway Master Plan, a Broadway parking study, and coming soon, actually, a microtransit plan where we're going to be partnering with Mast dot and the MBTA to provide some last mile connections to riders looking to connect to transit services. On the building project management side, we are leading efforts to redesign and redevelop the boatyard at Gibson Point, certainly the museum right down the street, as well as a new effort underway to renovate the McKinley School into three different uses and early childcare site, the food hub, and a 911 call center. On the planning side, we've initiated a couple pretty aggressive planning efforts in the last year, including our housing production plan, the Broadway Master Plan, a series of municipal vulnerability preparedness, or MVP, planning efforts. And as I mentioned, tonight, we'll be kicking off with our working group, the first of many sessions for our bike and pedestrian master planning. And then with our small business support, we've provided small business support to nearly 50 small businesses in the city. We've provided support for our sign and facade program. Actually, if you look right across the street at 270 Broadway, the facade improvements that we saw there are the first in many improvements we'll see both on Broadway and Shirley Avenue in the next year through our sign and facade program. And we are always looking to continually aggressively support our small business community to make sure they have the resources that they need to thrive. So looking ahead in the next year, you know, certainly the work with all the building projects that I mentioned, we are going to proceed rapidly. Our OPM service, we just selected an OPM for the McKinley School redesign project. Hopefully, we'll have some shovels in the ground with some key park projects, including Oak Island, Fitz Henry Park, 69 Shirley, and hopefully Gibson Park by the end of the fiscal year. We are implementing the bike pedestrian master plan where we're seeking to create a network of bike and pedestrian friendly projects throughout the city that can be tied to some state and federal funding that's available. And then we're continuing to aggressively look at ways to expand and diversify our economic competitiveness in the city. I know a lot of the things that the CFO mentioned this evening with regard to trying to reduce the burden on the residential tax base. We're acutely aware of that upstairs at DPCD. And we're always looking at ways to expand our economic competitiveness, whether it's continuing to support what Suffolk Downs is doing, looking at new emerging sectors like climate tech. Or even, I know, Mr. Chair, we were working together on a project with cannabis zoning and looking at all those different opportunities we can to expand our economic competitiveness. And then, you know, a few other things in the next year to look out for. We just brought on a sustainability manager. And there's a lot of different resources, federal and state, available to help support sustainability work throughout the city. And on the zoning side, I think we've got a lot of exciting work ahead, hopefully coming on the heels of the Broadway Master Plan and the Housing Production Plan. And then finally, we're going to continue to look at ways to apply for new grants to bring more money into the city. So just in the last week alone, we submitted seven different grants for $7 million in total funding from the state through their one-stop program. And just a month previous, we added three other grants totaling about $4 million in various applications. So we're always looking to bring money into the city, whether it's through grants, whether it's through development, or a host of ways that we support our small business community. So that's it in a nutshell. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Tom. Any questions from the council? Councillor Agenzio.
Good afternoon, Mr. Skorowski. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of quick questions. The salaries in your budget here, there's $391,000 from total salary from other sources. Do you know what those other sources are?
Yes, some of the sources are ARPA. And then a good chunk of it is a community development block grant program. So we received a $740,000 entitlement grant this year, of which we. of which we can use twenty percent of that for staff time. So about twenty percent of that figure goes towards supporting staff, particularly the community development manager and my position. And then the Mass Gaming Commission released a new program this year called the Community Mitigation Fund. It might be a one-time program, depending on how the state government works out budgeting, but we received about six hundred thousand dollars through that program, of which seven and a half percent can be used for administration to support staff time. And then finally, we just received word last week, and I alluded to this in my comments, we've received about two and a half million dollars over the next three years to implement a micro transit program, which will provide, you know, essentially a subsidized taxi service for residents in both Revere and Chelsea. And that will be connecting to last mile, getting people to the T with an eye particularly towards the Point of Pines and a lot of the changes that have happened because of the bus network redesign. But also with that program, we have a small amount of staff time that we're looking to take on into the budget.
Okay, thank you. And just one more question. I noticed that the city planner and associate city planner are no longer in the budget. Are those positions?
I certainly hope the city planner is in the budget. I need to go back and look at the numbers here, but the city planner is still funded and actually that's the other source I neglected to mention is our infiltration and inflow fee pays for that. But the associate planner was taken out of the budget and that was, that was my call ultimately, because I wanted to make sure that the folks we already had upstairs were able to avoid that fiscal cliff when we hit ARPA, to make sure everybody's brought on to the general fund.
Okay, so last year, the city planner did appear in the budget, but that position is still staying.
Yeah, if I may, the city planner is technically a part-time position, so we would usually list that in the part-time salaries, but his salary is fully funded through the INI account. So he is certainly in the budget, but not, there's no appropriation needed for him.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Counselor Coglino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, thank you for the presentation. This actually might be more of a question for Mr. Vizki. So one of my concerns this year was the ARPA funds and what I'd like to know is, when it runs out, time-wise, when is it actually going to run out and what's our plan to fund after their, the ARPA funds have run out?
So many, many of the positions that are funded by ARPA, that were funded at one hundred percent, you'll see a lot of them, if you see other financing sources and it's half the salary, that's our way of trying to assimilate them into the operating budget. So for the planning department, for example, we use, we're using fifty percent of that for our housing planner and project manager. She was a hundred percent in 2024, now at fifty, and then the plan is to bring her on full time. The grant writer position is funded a hundred percent with ARPA funds. The hope is that that, that position is going to, I mean, there's, there's millions and millions of dollars out there right now to be had on grant writing, so we're hoping that position will actually pay for itself after one year of funding. But to your point, we are, we have until 2026 to use those funds. Most of the projects have been budgeted and committed those dollars. The balance of the money we have is pretty much going to be the runout of these positions and in some positions they're actually going to end and others are, we're going to try to maintain on the budget to the best of our ability.
Thank you. And just one more question. So this probably going to apply to almost every department, but just the other salary column, could you just explain, we're seeing the base salary and then other salary, could you just give us some examples of what that consists of?
Yeah, primarily other funding sources, the grant, grant dollars or otherwise. I mean, ARPA funds are technically our grant dollars, so we have many positions that are funded through grants and the other funding sources. And I, we have a breakdown of it, I can give you a breakdown of all the...
No, so there's the, you know, there's the total salary, other sources, and then there's just the other sources, which is right next to...
Oh, other salary. Oh, typically that's education, that could be a travel allowance for a car allowance, that could be a cell phone allowance, that could be a stipend that is paid via collective bargaining. We, we roll it up because the, the more information we put, the smaller the print becomes, but we can get you that information if you need it.
Thank you. All set, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zamburu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Tom, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So thanks for your presentation. I guess my question falls in the same category as the presidents and award for Counselor. How much of your salaries is, is in ARPA funds and grant money? And when the ARPA funds run out, what kind of trouble are we in? And, you know, I, I, I hope, as the CFO said, that the grant writers position will pay for itself. But I'm, I'm worried because not only am I worried that we, we pay this out of ARPA and these other agencies, but we're on a ridiculously tight schedule since the high school bond. And, you know, we have, we're talking, we're talking debt exclusion, we're talking possibilities that all scare the heck out of me and scare the heck out of the taxpayers. So I guess my question, simple question is, how much of your core budget is going to, is ARPA and grant money?
I can answer that for you right now.
Okay, great.
It's, so in round figures, the ARPA funds for the planning department are at one hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two twenty-five?
Yeah. And then the majority of the other dollars come from our CDBG administration portion of our awards, so that's an annual award. So those are recurring administration dollars and we do have thirty-five thousand dollars coming from Mass Gaming Commission grant, which some of these grants, it's hard to estimate exactly how much we can use until we get the awards. We do think we may have additional dollars that may supplement some costs, but conservatively speaking, thirty-five thousand dollars from the Mass Gaming Commission.
And does that include the CDB?
No, CDBG is, is, is the, the annual award we get from HUD on the planning department. So those, I'll sum those up for you. It's twenty-two forty. That's about another hundred and twenty thousand dollars from CDBG.
And that doesn't look like it's going away, hopefully.
Well, we took a little cut already and we've adjusted accordingly.
Well, and we actually, this year, we received a hundred thousand more than we expected, but we're always going to kind of plan that that's not going to happen because the two years previous, we received a twenty percent cut and a twenty percent cut. I think it's always going to be somewhere in this range, but I can only speak for my department, saying I feel much better this year about where the trajectory of my department's going with regard to grant funding than last year. So I think we're on a steady course here and, and, you know, we looked at other ways to supplement, just to do what we could within the department, but I think we're on a good path.
Well, I hope you're right. Thank you.
A little leeway from the chair. Tom, thank you. Just a quick question. Is, is where the permanent salaries on our budget page, is that a typo for 2025 request?
Which...
So it shows on our page, permanent salaries, department request eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, mayor's request three hundred and thirty-five, eight forty-five.
Yeah, because the, we, the, think of it as the gross number that the department requests and then we apply all the grants and we bring that number down to the mayor's budget. So the, the use of the ARPA funds, use of the CDBG funds, we didn't, we didn't cut ten positions from Tom.
No, no, I just, I was just wondering...
It's a good question. No, but I understand, yes, for sure.
And then, so the grant writers position, I actually am excited to see that. I do think it will pay for itself. My only question with that is, will the grant writer be for the city or just the, your department itself?
For both. And, you know, I think there are different instances where some departments, the, the police being one of them, have somebody that they've been working with for a long time for certain prescribed grant programs, and I think that will continue. But, you know, particularly with all the state and federal programs coming down the pipeline now, it's hard to keep track. And, you know, we want to take in as many as we can, you know, within reason, we're not going to have one person apply for every grant in the city, but hopefully as many as possible.
Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Next department is the city solicitor.
Good evening, Ways and Means.
Good evening.
I won't bore you by repeating that, which is already printed in front of you in terms of goals and accomplishments, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the budget overall.
Any questions? Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kepisi, for coming tonight, and it's been a pleasure working with you all these years. I see you...
I like you too, Paul.
Thank you. I see you removed one position from your budget, the assistant solicitor. And my question is settlements. You budget twenty-five thousand dollars every year, but in subsequent year or in past years, that figure can become quite large. Is that just a wild guess? I mean, there's really no way of determining?
It's, it's not a wild guess. It's been sort of the customer practice that we've been following. As you can imagine, it's very difficult to predict. I mean, you could put ten million dollars in that budget and we probably wouldn't touch it, but I'll leave Rich to answer the rest of it.
Now, if, yeah, if, if it does go over, where does that additional money come from?
Yeah, a lot of times we've, you know, we always look to the budget of the solicitor, like legal services. If we have a good year with that, we can move money around, but it is tricky because some of these unknown snow and ice being one of them, we budget the same three fifty every year. We don't, we don't like to tie up money on stuff that could otherwise not be used at the expense of another department or, you know, it could be a, could be the, a person's job on the line with the, with the dollars. So we, we try to keep it low as possible without being too, too worried that we're not going to have enough money because we'll always be able to, you know, there's an unforeseen incidence, so if we really had to come to the council for a supplemental appropriation, we could, but we always try to do the transfers within the appropriated budgets when, when we have an issue.
Okay. And do we have any kind of like an insurance policy for, for large settlements, would, if ever to happen?
I'll let Paul answer that one.
We, we're essentially self-insured, except for right now for internal matters involving employees. Anything outside of that, we are self-insured, but we do have some insurance and we get it every year and I, I know that I believe we're acquiring now as to what's available. There aren't a lot of insurance companies that will insure municipality. So we have a deductible, a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible for each claim, but it's personnel matters, not, nothing outside the city, so no civil rights claims, no pot hole claims, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Questions from the council?
Zamburu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Paul, for coming up and thanks for not reading the accomplishments.
Sorry, I didn't want to bore you to death.
I've been around here a long time and I know you have a lot of accomplishments and I've, I've watched most of them.
Thank you, Counselor.
The one thing I'm worried about is the settlement fund, especially this year, and we won't get into details, but my biggest fear is that we're going to have a problem. We'll leave it at that.
I hope not. I think I know what you're talking about, that's being treated somewhat differently than all our other claims for settlements. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's all hope for the best.
Kelly's got it.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Thanks for what you do. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, Solicitor Kepisi. I just have a question. Considering all that's going on, I see that we have for outside legal services, two hundred and fifty thousand. Do you see that as being sufficient?
Right now I do, yes. Again, like Rich was saying in regards to the settlement account, you never know when you're going to need it, depending on what comes and always, that's always beyond our control. We never know what's coming down the pike. So right now I see that as sufficient, I do. I don't think we've expended that yet this fiscal year, so...
But, sorry. Do you, do you see that in, in your experience, do you feel that 2025 might be an increase in litigation matters that we've seen compared to what we've seen in the past?
I, 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 I think I know what you're talking about. The way the site was bonded, we've been paying from that money to outside counsel. So I'll let Rich answer that then.
Yeah, we, there's some legal services that are embedded in the, the bonding for the eminent domain cases is a different fund.
So they've been accounted for somehow?
There's money appropriated in a different account for, for those costs, so it won't, it won't bear on his two hundred and fifty, his operating budget.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thanks, Paul, for coming up tonight. Just a quick question. Can you give us a quick explanation on, on legal fees and, and the exact explanation? So I've, I've had, I've been asked a few times, why don't we just hire another attorney?
Sure. And that's a, that's an interesting question. It depends on what the need is. So if eminent domain, for example, it was a specialty. It's not something we do all the time. And often, it can be more expensive to have an in-house counsel get caught up to speed and provide them with the benefits, et cetera, et cetera, than to just pay outside counsel to do something that they specialize on. Because we're municipality, as you all know, we can be subject to all kinds of legal, I guess a tax is too strong a word, but it's the word that comes to mind at the moment. And in some of these areas, like employment law, like eminent domain, like environmental law, those are very specialized areas where you want an expert because it provides the best protection to the interests of the city, to have the best possible legal defense. And though internally, we can learn them, they're so infrequent and they're so specialized, I think it would be more cost effective, I think, and Rich is better at understanding the numbers than I, to bring in attorneys and pay them regularly with all that's attached there too, might actually be more expensive than using the occasional outside law firm for the special area.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, regarding releases and settlements, what kind of things does that include? Would that include water damage from a city pipe breaking and damaging somebody's property?
Yes. If we were to determine that the city was particularly negligent or liable, I know a lot of the citizens think that we're basically like an insurance company. If it's the city's pipe and water came out of it, we must be responsible. I apply the law and it's, it's, it's a delicate act, right? Because the individual is a taxpayer, but I'm also protecting the taxpayer's monies from going to people if it's not warranted. That's, that's my role. I represent the city. Dan Dardi and I represent the city. My office represents the city. So sometimes people are never happy, but I look at the facts. And if I believe based on what's learned and I get reports from the DPW or the police, depending on the situation, that I find that there's some responsibility on the part of the city, I will make an offer of payment to those individuals to help alleviate the damages they may have experienced. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question.
Agenzio.
It just so happened you're here. Are you involved in the lease for the wellness center, negotiating that lease?
I was at the time. The lease has been set.
Maybe, Mr. Vizki, that was a three-year lease. Is that getting set to expire?
Yes.
Okay. So we're being asked this year to fund the wellness center, to give it a chance to get off its feet. If we sign another three-year lease and next year at this time, hopefully this doesn't happen, but if, if it's not financially solvent, are we able to get out of that lease or are we locked into it for three years?
Man, I think the particular lease we have right now was a three-year lease. I think your point is valid, so I'm not sure if we would negotiate another three-year lease or one-year options, but yeah, your point's well taken.
Right. If I could make that suggestion, maybe a one-year option.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Thank you, Mr. Kepisi.
Next up is the license commission. Just as well.
Hi, I'm also here to, to, to speak on behalf of the license commission budget, but I don't even know if that's, there's enough there to warrant the time for you guys to go through it, so it's very little. it, so it's very little. It's just a supply budget and then the salaries for the members. That's all it is.
Any councils have any questions?
Just one quick one. I noticed from this year from last, the licensed clerk, $6,000. That wasn't there last year. Did that money come from some other spot or?
I'll leave that to Rich to answer where the money came from, but I believe it was something overall, and Rich will correct me if I'm wrong, where there was a, go ahead, Rich, you tell them.
I think that the $6,000 is part of the ordinance that was just adopted for statements for the clerks of the boards.
Okay, great.
That's what it was.
Next up is the Conservation Commission.
Does any of the councils have questions for the Conservation Commission?
Sure, I have one question.
Counselor Genzio?
I noticed that clerk position, there is no pay to it. Does that, does that clerk not get anything?
Yeah, I think in this case, the agent serves as the clerk of that committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is Engineering. My apologies, I skipped over the Election Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Paul Fahey, Election Commissioner. Thanks for the opportunity to present my budget. Similar to Paul, I won't go into too much detail about the accomplishments. I'm certainly happy to answer questions. We did what we did last year. We just did more of it. We obviously had a very challenging, at times, and successful municipal election, including a recount. I'd have to say, I think it went very well, all things considered, so we're pleased with that. This year obviously presents the once-in-a-four-year cycle of a presidential election, and the numbers have been adjusted to reflect that, and Rich and I can answer any questions that you have about that. So I'm happy to just go into, basically, answering any questions that you have about the differences between last year and this year, and any other questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from the council? Counselor Claudio Leandro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, oh my goodness. Mr. Fahey, thanks for being here. I just noticed a deduction in the poll worker salaries. Just out of curiosity, are we gonna begin moving towards more centralized voting and to lower that cost?
So the reduction in that account for this year is reflective of the fact that we will only have two elections in fiscal '25, the two elections in the fall, unless there's some special, we never know that that's gonna happen. I had gone in with a higher number when I met with Rich because the presidential is unique, we, because of the volume of things, particularly with the vote-by-mail, early voting, you know, we bring in a lot more poll workers to help outside of Election Day, and I will tell you that we will have additional staff on Election Day in November. I think the September primary will be fairly quiet, given the configuration of the ballot, but November will be very different. We'll have the presidential, we'll have all the other campaigns, we have the Regional School Committee, we'll have a number ballot question, so it's gonna be, as you can imagine, a very busy, so I had gone in with the higher number. Rich and I went over the numbers together, and I feel comfortable with the number that we've come up with. We always give early warning if it looks like we're gonna have a problem with something, but I think we'll be fine. At this point, we're not having any active discussions with the commission about consolidation. I mean, it's always something that, you know, maybe, I know people have feelings about it, it's something that we sort of look at from time to time. Right now, I think what you have seen in last year's election configuration of polling places will be the same, certainly for the upcoming elections. Whether we change anything going forward with that, it's just too soon to say. Thank you.
Counselor Zamburu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Paul. Thanks for coming up, and thanks for not boring us with your accomplishments. We all know you do a great job.
Too many to mention, Counselor, I know.
Well, I know that. We know you do a great job, and we appreciate you. It doesn't look like you have any extra money that we can cut, so I just want to ask you to continue to keep doing a good job down there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Genzio?
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. Excellent job on the elections since you've been here. Impressive. I just have one question. It's not necessarily a budget question. I see the city has decided to no longer offer notary services to the public. Is that, what was the rationale behind that?
That came as a result of a very long process and conversation about a number of issues, including the fact that the Election Department has had that responsibility for many years prior to the growth in our workload, frankly, with the Votes Act. And, you know, in addition to early voting and vote-by-mail and the census, we have automatic voter registration, which I think some of you are familiar with. If you deal with a state agency, usually the registry, but not exclusively, you are registered to vote, and the volume of transit, I can get into more detail about it, but the volume of transactions, so the workload in our office has grown. We had done a couple of things initially. We had reduced the hours, first of all, for notary services, and we did with, in consultation with the mayor's office, suspend those during election season. So at a minimum, we were gonna be doing the same thing. The nature of notary services has changed a lot, certainly in the time that I've been here. There are a number of issues relative to the complexity of the documents that people are coming in with, the fact that often people come in with no document. They say, "I want to do X," and they want us to, you know, I noticed Counselor Kelly was looking as an attorney, like you just wouldn't, you wouldn't, you would have an attorney or you would have at least an established document. The language issues, the complexity of the documents, lots of people coming, a lot of communities have stopped doing it, I think for the exact same reasons that we ultimately decided to. So they know Revere does it. People come from quite a distance sometimes to get things done. They come in with multiple. So for a number of reasons, we had been looking at alternatives, and in conversations with the mayor's office made this decision. So what we do currently, now, we still do internal notary services. There are, you know, Ashley's a notary, we have other notaries in the city, where we have those internal documents that need to be done, internal city documents, and there's two, myself and one other staff person are notaries, and we'll continue to do that. But we provide a pretty extensive list, a 3-1-1, for people with different language needs, and even mobile notaries, so that if somebody has mobility issues, there are notaries that will come to them, and Nick and I will continue to communicate to keep that list up to date. But that was the reason why.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Great job.
Chairman, good luck.
Next up is Engineering.
Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for having me tonight. You can read a lot of the infrastructure-related, you know, improvements and accomplishments that we had been able to do over the last year. There is one that I think is worth mentioning to stand alone, and that's the crossing at Oak Island. The replacement of the water line and an addition of a redundant water line and the replacement of the sewer line is a tremendous accomplishment, and it's just something that I think is worth noting. And just a point on that one also, as of last, I think it was Thursday, that job, other than, you know, repave in the future somewhere, is complete, and our contractor has demobilized. And so for any residents that are watching, thank you for your cooperation. That was a big task and very significant improvement. With that, if there's, I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposed fiscal '25 budget?
Thank you, Nick. Any questions from the council? Counselor Claudio Leandro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick, thank you for being here tonight. Just a question. I noticed a $108,000 bump in permanent salaries. I just, I don't know if it's because a position was added, or if you could just explain that for us and the public.
Yep, so it's a, and maybe, Mr. Viscais could elaborate, but it's just a movement of an existing position from another.
Yeah, that was a position we moved from DPW budget with, you know, the new organization. We felt that the Infrastructure Program Manager was better fit for Engineering Department.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Novoseltsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick, I know we talked about the other day, what's, you got two vacant positions for engineers' status and filling them. Is that gonna be imminent, or is it gonna be something we're gonna be hanging on with?
I hope it's imminent. We have had a good amount of applicants. We did interview three last week. One that is very promising. You know, I'm hoping to fill those positions, you know, as soon as I find a quality candidate. So, you know, I would have them filled yesterday if I could, but the plan is to fill them ASAP. I hope that they don't, that I'm able to do that relatively quickly.
That salary that we have on here, is it 98 or so? Is that compensable with outside agencies? You know, that people would want to take that instead of moving on to something higher?
So it really depends on, it depends on the position that you're comparing it to in the private sector. There are, as you might imagine, positions that are out there that, you know, compensate much better, but it is within the range, I think, of, you know, a quality candidate that has, you know, a decent amount of experience. I don't think that we're looking at it, you know, a 20-year veteran, but somebody that, you know, has somewhere between three and seven years' experience, I think it's fitting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nick, thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Counselor Genzio?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Raystrom. It's been great working with you all these years. It's really been a pleasure, and thank you for, you seem like you're always working short-staffed, and now I'm working no staff now. I just have two questions about the paving contract. Where does that stand? You think we'll be getting some paving this year? I know-
Yes. So we're working under the existing contract, that we are in the midst of putting the next round out. We had some issues with the previous public bid, and so we're, we'll be putting out a slightly revised version, probably within the next, I don't know, two to three weeks, I would say.
And then hopefully, we can pave in the fall?
Correct, or as soon as possible.
Right. And I know this wasn't your decision. Last paving contract, we had an option to renew that existing contract for two subsequent years, but it was decided to go back out to bid. That kind of increased the price two, three times of what it was?
It increased it. I don't know if it was two or three times it did-
And it was the same contract?
So the same contractor, in addition to another one did bid on the contract, so previously, the lowest qualified bidder was the existing contractor. And I don't know the specifics of how we got to that point. I wasn't involved that intimately at the time.
Right, I know, I realize that.
But, yeah, I mean, I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll, the contractor will come in with numbers that are, you know, I don't expect them to be exact, but hopefully comparable.
Okay. And one other, the bid for these stairs at the senior center, where does that stand?
So that one also is one that stands to be rebid. As far as I understand, the filed sub-bids will remain. Those were in good standing. It was the general portion that came in significantly above what our construction estimate was. And so we feel that if we put it out again, we can solicit some more interest and have a little bit more response. The previous bid was one contract, I believe, that we're hoping for more than that.
If I could make a suggestion, in August, August 24th of 2022, we hired Weston and Sampson to do an assessment of those stairs, and their assessment, when they came back, that you could repair them, do a repair for $300,000 to $400,000. Maybe that's revisit that? I mean, I know the bid came in close to $1 million. It seems like maybe if you could repair them and you had some extra money, you could spend it inside the building. I certainly want to spend money at the senior citizen center, but if, maybe that could be revisited and, you know, maybe not-
Sure, we can certainly look at that. I believe that there is some concern with the compliance to the current code and to ADA requirements, so that may be a sticking point, but we certainly can look at, you know, the possibility of a repair versus, you know, the complete replacement.
If you don't have it, I can send you the Weston and Sampson-
Sure. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's possible, but we, yeah, we were certainly dismayed at the one bid we got for the price, so I'm looking to definitely get more competitive bids on that. But I was also wondering if there wasn't any reason why we couldn't build something in the rear of the building as opposed to the front of the building, because the front is much higher off the ground, and it may be a little more cost efficient to, if you're gonna build something new, build it right on, build a new construction on the rear. So I don't know enough to know that that's even a viable option, but we're definitely trying to look at all options to get that repaired. But I think, I think the slope of the current one is off, so may not be too conducive of repairing it because it's still out of compliance, but we'll-
Well, Weston, I have the thing from Weston and Sampson. You can take the copy. They, it was able to be ADA compliant with a repair, and it just saves some money, and maybe you can spend it better inside the building. I know the seniors are always-
I'm all for it, yes.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joanne McKenna, Ward 1 Counselor. There are a couple of streets that I haven't been done in Beauchamp. Either, it was either done by National Grid or CDM Smith. Wave Ave was one of them. It's been years, probably three years, and the street is really, it needs work, so I was just wondering when that's gonna be done. And the other thing is, I know we, you and I talked about trees, but I know we have a tight budget, but we need trees in the city, and we just cannot neglect that foliage in, I mean, there are, we're gonna be a concrete community. So we really do need trees, and I know there's a budget, we're tightening our belts, but we have to look at the fall. We have got, well, I know Ward 1 didn't get any trees in the city for the spring, so I'm looking for the fall for something. All right? Could you answer that? Thank you.
So as far as the trees go, I have been in contact with DCR. They have a tree planting program. Looking to try to have them do some trees in your area. The other part of that, Wave Ave, so that is a place where National Grid did work. I recently was able to get them to send me information, basically acknowledging that they do owe us either paving or a distribution. I think in that case, it will likely be the actual paving. And so, once I have some scheduling with them, then I can certainly share that with you. But last conversation I had with National Grid was that that would be sometime during this construction season.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Raystrom. Could you keep the council updated on National Grid agreeing to pave and when they're gonna be doing that?
Sure.
I know we've been having our own issues up here with them, so we'd like to just, if it's possible, just notify what's going. Thank you very much.
I would just render that with, they're sort of difficult to tie down, so when I have information, you'll have it.
Appreciate you.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nick, just a couple of things. Doing National Grid first, you know, they totally dug up Campbell Ave from Centennial down to the Parkway after we just paved it. And I know we have, we have plans to do others, but they have to come back and do some trench work. It's horrible, all the way down. It's horrible. I mean, people are bouncing their heads off the top of their cars, and it's very, very bad down there. So we have to get, you know, Matt Lawley on this and, you know, get him repaired. Like I said, I know we're gonna be digging it up for drainage issues. You know, I talked to Donnie Tirmello, he talked about fixing some of the laterals and so, and I know we're gonna have to dig it up again, but at least get it patched until we do our, you know- until we do our, you know, get that work done. And I know they didn't give us, I don't think they gave us any money for that street.
No, so I would agree absolutely that we need to have a conversation with them about repairing their trench paving. We, as far as I understand, we have not received a distribution for that one, so I think it would be incumbent on them to perform that work.
I agree.
And I'm certainly on board with you. I agree that that is something that we need to, you know, move forward.
Yeah. The other issue, the second part of that, is going back to trees. I know we've had a lot of construction in Shirley Ave. Some of them, trees were put in, some of them were not. And I know I have maybe about 15 or 20 tree pits that still have to be cut that I've been waiting for three years for.
Okay.
Just cut the pits for now. Then we can get DCR in to plant the trees if we're not going to plant them, and I guess there's no grant money for that stuff. But we got to do something. The businesses are looking for trees. They want the trees in there, and they know it beautifies neighborhoods. I know sometimes they don't, but in this case, they want them. You know, and we just, we did Fitz Henry Square and Campbell Ave, part of that, there were no tree pits put in for that, which I think should have been done. That has to be a priority, whether we put in a tree, the pit there or not, I mean, a tree or not at this point, but at least fill it in and the pit is there, so when we do get the trees available, it's easier to dig out a pit, then have to cut it and redo it. So I know I had seven on Campbell Avenue, I got seven more on Shirley Ave, at least, and there's a couple more other places that, for some reason, we filled in over the last couple of years that I really want trees there. So we got to get some action on those and get those pits cut.
Yep. So I did receive your email about that as well, so message received on the tree pits.
Yeah, and, you know, I haven't sent you the new seven yet.
What is it?
The new seven pits.
Okay. If you have the list, send it to me.
I do.
Okay.
I will get it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. Chairman. I mean, if we're having problems with National Grid, maybe we should call, we should get the city solicitor involved in it. That's how I feel, because they seem to be not responding to him, they're not responding to us as a council, they're not responding to the city, so maybe we should get the city solicitor involved in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Next up is the City Clerk and Zoning Board of Appeals budget. So far for the City Clerk, the Office Supplies budget is going to remain level funded this year at $25,000, and our Contracted Services budget is remaining level this year as well at $25,950. Out of that Contracted Services, it's software through Granicus, it's our boards and commission software that the city has been using. It's been helping out, tracking our boards and commissions. And the other software that comes out of there is MinuteTrack. That, Granicus is getting rid of MinuteTrack, what the city council currently uses, and that's going to be phased out, and I'm going to go with Peak Agenda, that's also by Granicus, so we're keeping with the same company, and hopefully we'll get that launched by 2025. You'll notice the increase in the Assistant City Clerk's salary, so now, her base is now comparable to that of other assistant positions in city government. The city council had passed that salary ordinance back in the fall. And the City Clerk and the Clerk 2s listed under the salaries received increases based on the Unit B contract and the most recent parity salary ordinance that was passed by the city council. And just a couple of notable milestones in the City Clerk's office, I just want to say that the Assistant City Clerk has been appointed as a Justice of the Peace for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I have recently obtained the status of Certified Municipal Clerk through the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. So, thank you. There's only, so that's continuing education for the position of City Clerk. There's only 112 other clerks in Massachusetts who have this designation, and there are 351 municipalities, okay? And then you'll see just that, there's an increase that was also approved by the city council back in the fall for the position of ZBA Clerk. So if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions from the council? Nope? Okay. Counselor Leandro?
I'd like to propose some cuts. No, I'm just kidding. Congratulations, Ashley. And I just, I just want to say for the entire city, if anyone wants to know who really keeps this, this council together, it is the Clerk, Ashley Melnick, and we are so, so lucky to have her. I want everyone to know that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zamburu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to throw a few bouquets, of course. I say it, and I say I meet a lot of people across the state in municipalities, and I tell them all that we have the best city clerk in the state. And I'm not lying about that, because we do. And one of my greatest accomplishments, along with my friend George Colola, was to get Ms. Melnick appointed to this position. So I'll die with that designation, that I appointed the best city clerk in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. And Ashley, yes, I agree with them wholeheartedly. You do an amazing job for us as a counselor, never not answer a call or text or email, and deserved all the bouquets you get. Thank you. And that closes tonight's business for the '25 budget. We'll see you tomorrow.